With that in mind, I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners February 26, 2019 Work Session Order, and I'm glad to have elected officials. Sheriff Delius here, and City Councilman Jenny Hinson here. And let anybody out, just call the Commissioners, they'll let me know. Brian, if you'll bring your list forward, and have your cellphone on, and give it time to turn it off. Always delighted to have Mr. Tommy Leonard with us, and he's the Chaplain of the Paulding Public Appreciation Incorporated. And Tommy, appreciate you bringing the invitation this morning and leading us up in the place.
Thank you. Please stand. Thank you for the privilege of allowing me to be here. Let's pray. Father God Almighty, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that you made for us. You are the master and creator of all that is and all that will ever be. And Father, we ask that you bless today's meeting, our commissioners and staff. In Hebrews Chapter 13, verse 17, says, "Obey your leaders and submit to their authority. They keep watch over you as men who must give an account. Obey them, so that their work will be a joy, not a burden, for that would be of no advantage to you." And Father, we give thanks to you for all of your blessings. And Lord, you have blessed us abundantly with a freshwater resource in our new reservoir that we'll enjoy soon, and soon we'll have a new detention facility. And Father, we just ask that you help to move all contention for many of these issues so that they would benefit us and help us to use them in a way that serves our citizens well. And we pray that these blessings that you have bestowed upon us bring honor and glory to you. And God, I ask that you continue to bless the 800-plus county employees that serve our citizens each day, and Lord, just let their cup overflow with your mercy and your grace. And Father, we pray that you continue to find favor in our county. We ask that you give our leadership the wisdom to lead us in a sustainable way to ensure progress and healthy growth in our county. And Lord, let us be good stewards of all that you have graciously given to us. You are a wonderful God, and we love you, and we thank you for loving us, and it's in the name of Christ Jesus, holy night, we pray.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Leonard, thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. The February 12, 2019 Work Session Minutes, and the February 12, 2019 Board Meeting Minutes are available for your review. Under the Positively Pauling section today, we had an unusual event Saturday before last, and I haven't seen this video, but look forward to it.
This is the Second Annual Polar Plunge, and we're at Carrington Point at Lake Swan, and it looks like we've got a really good crowd this morning. And the whole reason for this event is to raise money for Paulding County Special Olympics. So every dollar we raise will go directly to Special Olympic Athletes in Paulding County.
It's a great group, and we're great cause.
You know, I know the chairman has this program called Positively Pauling, and so events like this are just a true testament to what that embodies. And so we're pretty excited that we've got such a great response from the community, from the Sheriff's Office, from county government. And so it's just a great opportunity to highlight some of the good things that we're doing here in Paulding County, and that Don Emerson's doing to help our children, especially special needs children. And so this is, in my opinion, just a great opportunity to show what's Positively Pauling.
Superintendent Brian Upchuck was there, and he was smart enough to wear beach shoes because there are a lot of sharp rocks on the bottom of his feet. Under announcements also, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for today, well, we will not have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting today, we're having a call meeting on March 8 at 2 o'clock. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Paulding County Public Safety Appreciation Award to Ms. Lisa Shirley at the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. Are you gonna help with this, Sheriff Delius?
I am. I get bullied. She might have got told a story to get her, getting her here this morning. And she's trying to figure out, she gets here while her husband's here, and he's sleeping with some woman, and she said, "Hey, that's my mom." Of course, it is what it is, and Lisa's one of these people that works very hard and don't look for any accolades from it, but we want to take a chance this morning to present Lisa with this award, for the Public Safety Appreciation Award. She's been at the Sheriff's Office since 99. She's currently our Record Supervisor at Open Record. She oversees the Open Records, our retention schedules, along with the tasking projects and anything we come up with. She's one of those that just jumps in and gets the job done. She's a leader, most regular, and recognizably, she leads by example. She's proactive and constantly looking out for our future. In the last 12 months, she's took on a project to help us do research and find particular measures of new record management and general management system, which is way over my head, it's in Will's category. Sorry, Will. She put together a comedian spearheaded issue for the Sheriff's Office. Once we joined the other county public safety agencies seeking a safety software solution, she remained with it in her role of representing the Sheriff's Office.
got a young man here, his shadow Rebecca.
This is how she is and how she performs her duties at the Sheriff's Office.
Rebecca, you want to introduce your shadow?
Please accept this as a small token for your work ethic.
Yes, Chairman, this is Liam Adams.
Work, I can't speak this morning. Your loyalty and the value that you bring to the Sheriff's Office. And also I'd like to thank Texas Roadhouse for donating a state dinner for two, and we'll get that to you a little bit later, and if you can't get John together, I'll be with you. Please join me in congratulating Lisa Shirley.
He is homeschool, and he is learning about county government, and playing League of Dinosaur.
So we're glad to have him today.
While we're getting up with a picture here, it's Public Safety Appreciation Award, Very glad to have you. House Bill 30 is the supplementary budget, the 2019 supplementary budget, that has $35 Ms. Lisa Shirley, recognition of outstanding service to her community for this Paulding County Board of Commissioners. million designated for Paulding County Elementary and School. And I talked with the Technical College System of Georgia this morning, and just wanted to announce that that bill has passed the General Assembly, that would be both the Senate and the House, and it's on the Governor Kemp's desk. So look forward to some even better news when it gets off his desk. So very excited about that. So under invited guests, we've got Tommy Leonard, and also Mr. Carrera, who are very active with Keep Paulding Beautiful, and we've got this Megan Whitehead here from Keep Paulding Beautiful, I'm sorry, Keep Georgia Beautiful. And so, do you want to come up and recognize the grave of this town?
Hey, good morning. How cold was that water, by the way? They said it was about 10 degrees. We're gonna watch a short video, it's a recap of the 2018 year. 2018 was an exciting year for Keep Paulding Beautiful, doing 155 projects or events with the support of a serving community of 544 volunteers with 1,263 volunteer hours. Here are a few highlights. The first big event is Bring One For The Chipper. In cooperation with Keep Paulding Beautiful, Paulding DOT, and Humvee Boat, we chipped 388 trees, with the mulch being distributed throughout Paulding County. Next is our Bioscape Program. It is in place to reach our Paulding County legislators. The Bioscape effectively communicates our shared responsibility for the virus. This program is led by our own Nancy Hightower and Erica Wilson. In 2018, we reached a total of 910 third grade students. One of our favorite events is the shredder event. We had two in 2018, one in June, one in October. These two events together kept approximately six tons of paper waste from going into the landfill. Great American Cleanup, Keep America Beautiful's biggest project. Cleaning communities all over America. 2018, Keep Paulding Beautiful had four projects total, with three being on Silver Comet Trail, and the fourth at Berkeley Creek Park. We had 51 volunteers show up to make a difference. Next is what we call the Trash Flash Mob, but it's a trash flash mob, this is an invention of our own. Keep Paulding Beautiful has created this concept, and it was written about on the May 2018 issue of Georgia Magazine. Simply put, we use social media to set up cleanup. With a few days' notice and a spot chosen, we send out a call to the community, then we see who shows up. These usually do not last for more than an hour or two. We did 16 trash flash mobs in 2018 with great results. We had 160 volunteers with 386 volunteer hours, giving a total of 160 bags of trash. One tool we use to track Paulding County cleanup is the littering net. Each year, the month of March, the Paulding Beautiful Board of Directors conducts a county-wide drive-through, assessing the condition of the main roads in Paulding County. We've also been on a monthly drive-through. Take a look at www.kipauldingbeautiful.org for more information. Other projects we're addressing include monthly Keep Paulding Beautiful Board meetings, Rivers Alive with UGA Extension for H Club, Pride For Wishes, Earth State of Northern Ireland's College, and many other projects. We'd like to say thank you to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for your support, to the Keep Paulding Beautiful Board of Directors, who all are volunteers, and most of all, to the citizens who serve on these projects and events. Thank you.
Those of you who don't know me, my name is Tommy Leonard, and I'm actually a solid waste manager, recycling manager for Paulding County. I would like to introduce the people that are responsible for Keep Paulding Beautiful, and that is the Board of Directors. When I call your name, I would like for you to please come up to the front if you're here. Our President of the Board, Judge Sewell, who was not able to make it today, Vice President Nancy Hightower, Secretary Cliff McCready, Treasurer Erica Wilson, and included are the members Joey Collins with the City of Dallas, Mary Carol Sheffield with the UGA Extension, Bob Banks with Master Gardens, Gardeners, and also Civil Wigs. We also have a special guest with us today from Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, is Ms. Megan Whitehead, she's the Program Coordinator for Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, supporting Georgia's 78 local affiliates in programming, training, and technical assistance. Prior to joining Keep Georgia Beautiful in 2015, Megan worked for the Emory University and the Lincoln County Chamber of Commerce, along with hotels in Asheville, North Carolina, culminating in over eight years of experience in the hospitality, tourism, and public relations. She's a Georgia native and received her Bachelor of Science in Sociology and Anthropology at Mary College in 2008. She holds an Associate of Fine Arts and Theater from Young Heroes College. Megan currently resides in Cary, Georgia with her dog, Stella. Would you please give Megan a warm Paulding County word?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is a great honor to be here, and as you all can see from the video this morning, the testament to this organization, Keep Paulding Beautiful and the Board, has been an amazing job of getting out to the community, educating, doing cleanup events, and so forth. And that's the heart of the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation and the Keep Georgia Beautiful Network, as well as the Keep America Beautiful system. And it's to educate and to change behaviors in folks so that there's lasting improvement in litter, recycling, and beautification. And so here today, we are here to honor for two different awards, one from the national organization and one from the state organization. Both awards, as I said before, honor communities with its effort to protect and improve the local environment. The first award, which we will present later on, we don't have that award here today, is from Keep America Beautiful. The Keep America Beautiful President Circle Award is a premier designation given to affiliates who have exceeded good standing requirements in the categories of litter, recycling, and beautification. The award that we do have to present today, and as you can see from the picture, we were at the Capitol on Valentine's Day to award this for our affiliates, it's the Keep Georgia Beautiful's Governor's Circle Award. And this award is awarded to Paulding County, and it's presented annually by the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation in conjunction with our annual Legislative Day at the Capitol, recognizing its exemplary performance in litter reduction, waste minimization, and community greening. To call a place a Governor's Circle Award, an affiliate must be in good standing with Keep America Beautiful, the national nonprofit that oversees state and local programming. Requirements include conducting the annual litter index, which you saw in the video, calculating the affiliate's cost and benefit ratio, and engaging volunteers to take great responsibility for their community environment. And additionally, the affiliate must be active in the Georgia network with its membership, and that includes conferences, Bring One For The Chipper, which you saw in the video, and just engagement throughout the community. So we are very, very pleased today, and again, we don't have Keep America Beautiful as a award, but we do have the Georgia Governor's Circle Award, and I would love to present it to the Board in this fancy.
I'm gonna take a leak and ask Robert Cabrera to come up here, because everything that, all the paperwork and everything to keep us in good standing, and the narrative of the video, again, was Robert, and I don't want to accept that word without him standing with us.
Speaking for the Board, we just want to add our congratulations and gratitude for all that you all do. It's just amazing, you know, it translates into economic development and just community involvement that unifies all of us together, and we're just very, very pleased with this honor, and just thanks for all you do.
So I asked for another minute, because we have a lot of projects that we want to do this year, a lot. So we need help. We need volunteers to come out and get involved in what we're doing, don't take long. But we have some things coming up, and we're gonna have to do a lot more trash flash mobs. We can try to do several here in March, because as some may have noticed, the streets are in need of it. So we're gonna pick some places, and each one of the posts, and we're gonna actually do, you know, Post 1, Post 2, Post 3, Post 4, we're gonna do a cleanup in each one of them. We also have the airport, we're gonna do a, not really a cleanup, but we're gonna do a project here at the airport, where we're gonna work around the building, put some pipes through out, we're gonna plant a butterfly garden, things like that. That's April 6, for those of you who want to make it up, April 6, 8:30 to 12. We got on the, April 20, we also have a project, what's the 20th? I didn't write any of this down, as you can see.
We're working with Target, has approached us about doing a project, so we're gonna do the Great American Cleanup at Ben Hill Strickland Park in Hiram, and that is April 20, it's also a Saturday. So anyway, keep an eye on our Facebook page and the emails, and we will get some information out to you about when all this is gonna occur. We'd love it if everybody could join in. If you go to the website, keepauldingbeautiful.org, you can sign up and get emails. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Great accomplishment. We're pleased to have our CEO of our airport here today to bring us an annual report, and periodic reports, we feel like it's necessary. But Mr. Terry Tibbetts does an outstanding job with all the challenges of the airport, and here we should look forward to your remarks this morning. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'll add to what Robert just said, they are gonna be at the airport on April 6. They came out last year, and it was a very successful event, we appreciate that. And we have picked that weekend, because the next weekend, Shepherd's Rest, is gonna be having a charity fund run at the airport, and we'd like to advertise that for them as well, and invite everybody to come out and participate in that, it's a very important charity in our community. Also, before I get started, I'd like for Randy and Yolanda Newell to stand up, Randy Foster and Yolanda, they represent 100% of the airport staff. I absolutely could not do what I do without them, they are a terrific help. Okay, so, annual reports. I've given a few of these now, they have been challenged, but I look forward to giving this one, because this one, I think, is all good news. Before we can talk about the vision and the future and where we're headed, I think it's important to understand where we've come from. So I'm gonna take a few minutes, and I'm gonna talk about the past. The Paulding County Airport Authority was created by an act of the Georgia State Legislature in 1972, and the Paulding County Airport Authority is designated as a political subdivision of Georgia. That makes us a government entity. A lot of people want to think of us as something other than what we are, but we are a legitimate government entity created by the state legislature in 1972. You can look the act up online and read about what our duties and responsibilities are, how our membership was selected, all of those things. The Paulding County Airport Authority lay mostly dormant from 1972 until the turn of this century, when the Paulding County leadership determined at the time was right to build a public use airport, general aviation airport, in Paulding County. And the Paulding County Board of Commissioners at that time, jointly with the revitalized Paulding County Airport Authority, began to do the planning, design, development, and construction of the first new airport to open in Paulding County, or excuse me, open in Georgia in 33 years. So this is a rare event. Airports represent major investments, major engineering feats, and they don't open every day. And so that kind of created us as a unique entity in the state of Georgia. From the beginning, the Paulding County Airport was a joint venture between the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners, with very strong cooperation between these two government entities. The Board of Commissioners created an airport department, which oversaw the FAA grant process, which resulted in over $40 million in federal grants from the FAA, and millions more in state and local funding being made available for the development of the Paulding County Airport. We had support from the governor, from the state and federal congressional delegations, county officials and departments, and the various state and federal agencies involved in the project. You can imagine on a project like this, that the involvement of EPD, Fish and Wildlife, just all of the government entities that are involved in major infrastructure and transportation projects get involved, and there was great coordination and cooperation from all of these. The Paulding County Airport opened on November 15, 2008, just as the nation was being gripped by the biggest recession and economic downturn in our lifetime. The tax revenues were dropping, Paulding County budgets were short, county employees were receiving no raises, and in some cases, being furloughed or laid off. In the midst of that economic downturn, county leadership come to all county department heads and challenged them to come up with good ideas that would help the county cover the shortfall. By fall of 2012, the Paulding County Airport Department, which was your department, and the Paulding County Airport Authority, working jointly and cooperatively together, entered into negotiations with Propeller Investments to bring commercial service to the Paulding County Airport, and ultimately resulted in four contracts that surrounded the expansion of the airport. In your written copy, I've outlined these four contracts, and the dates, and the major topics covered, but these have been well discussed, so I'll skip over that section. But the three that were of most importance to us, of course, were the bond payment contract, the 60-acre land lease contract, and the commercialization contract itself. The project to commercialize the airport erupted into a firestorm of political unrest and community disharmony, with very strong opinions on all sides of this issue. By the election season of 2014, those opposed to the expansion of the airport had won elections that would give majority control of the Board of Commissioners to the Commissioners openly opposed to the expansion of the airport, resulting in the outgoing Commissioners at that time, who did support the expansion of the airport, in developing and entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Paulding County Airport Authority, dissolving the Paulding County Airport Department and effectively turning control of the Paulding County Airport over to the PCA. This did not, however, relieve the county of its obligations under the terms of the grants from the FAA, and so the county is still financially obligated to support the airport, even though today they don't have direct control, managerial control, of the airport. What ensued was four long years of fighting between the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners over the direction that the airport would take. So how did the Airport Authority perform? It is the position of the Paulding County Airport that we have met every single obligation of each and every contract that we have signed with any and all parties. We have protected the airport asset as a safe and efficient airport in full compliance with all terms of the FAA grants, in spite of great opposition from many different sources. The unpaid members of the Paulding County Airport Authority have gone above and beyond their call of service to their community, and taken great abuse from those opposed to the expansion of the airport, and carrying out their responsibilities to the FAA, the state, and our community. We owe them a great deal of thanks for a job well done in this almost impossible assignment that they were given. How did Silver Comet perform? Silver Comet failed to establish the $500,000 escrow account required by the bond payment contract. They made only two of the bond payments, and blamed your board, with whom they did not have contractual agreement, as the reason for the failure of making any additional payments. They have not brought a single new business or tenant to the airport under the terms of the 60-acre land lease agreement, and have blamed us, you, the City of Atlanta, Delta Airlines, and others for their failure, even though we, the Paulding County Airport Authority, during that time, have attracted four new businesses, a maintenance facility, a flight school, a charter service, and an airport management company, who have joined the existing four businesses that were there to bring the total businesses operating at the airport to date, representing about a dozen full-time jobs. Modest, to be sure, but that success, we believe, is in the face of overwhelming odds, and I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've been able to accomplish to date. Silver Comet notified us in writing of their intention to lease one acre in Track C of the 60 acres, but never pursued that when they found out that the Airport Authority in fact did hold clear title to all property at the airport. They notified us in writing of their intention to lease 20 acres in Track A and Track B of the 60-acre land lease, but when they found out that we were in fact in a position to honor that lease, we never heard any more from that again. This was in an effort to thwart, we believe, the school that's coming adjacent to that property. They apparently believed that it included the property that had been set aside for the 60 acres, and when they found out that we were prepared to hand them a lease, that went away. They notified us in writing of their intention to lease the entire terminal building by December 1, which was the deadline of their right to expand, which would have kept the contract alive, but they chose instead to service with a lawsuit blaming the Paulding County Airport Authority for the failure of the commercialization of the Paulding County Airport. On December 3, 2018, my Board, the Paulding County Airport Authority, exercised our right to terminate commercial lease and airport use agreement under the terms of paragraph 37 of that contract. Silver Comet Terminal Partners has now filed suit, and four businesses that were there to bring the total businesses operating at the airport to date, representing about a dozen full-time jobs. Modest, to be sure, but that success, we believe, is in the face of overwhelming odds and I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've been able to accomplish to date. Silver Comet notified us in writing of their intention to lease one acre in track C of the 60 acres, but never pursued that when they found out that the Airport Authority in fact did hold clear title to all property at the airport. They notified us in writing of their intention to lease 20 acres in track A and track B of the 60-acre land lease, but when they found out that we were in fact in a position to honor that lease, we never heard any more from that again. This was in an effort to thwart, we believe, the school that's coming adjacent to that property. They apparently believed that it included the property that had been set aside for the 60 acres. And when they found out that we were prepared to hand them a lease, that went away. They notified us in writing of their intention to lease the entire terminal building by December 1st, which was the deadline of their right to expand, which would have kept the contract alive, but they chose instead to service with a lawsuit blaming the Paulding County Airport Authority for the failure of the commercialization of the Paulding County Airport. On December 3rd, 2018, my board, the Paulding County Airport Authority, exercised our right to terminate commercial lease and airport use agreement under the terms of paragraph 37 of that contract. Silver Comet Terminal Partners has now filed suit in federal court with various claims against the Paulding County Airport Authority blaming us for the failure to commercialize the airport. Today, the contract to commercialize the Paulding County Airport, a contract that has divided this community for over six years and cost this community millions of dollars in litigation, lost productivity, damages to our reputation of both the aviation community and the world of business at large, is over. All that remains now is the litigation. So what is the plan ahead? Where do we go from here? We have emerged from this experience with the confidence that the Paulding County Airport can serve our community as a vital link in our transportation infrastructure and provide a base upon which new business can be attracted to our great county. And that by working together, the Paulding County Airport Authority and the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, can lead this airport to become one of the greatest general aviation airports in the country. I'm going to go off script for just a minute and I'm going to make the following observations. Paulding County Airport was struck by an F-3 tornado, direct hit. We have suffered through three forest fires, floods, sinkholes, lightning strikes. We had a direct lightning strike to the top of the rotating beacon, took out most of our electronic systems there at the airport. This airport has suffered a great many adversities and we are still there today. We have survived it all and I would recommend that nobody bet against the Paulding County Airport. We're going to be around and I hope that we can work together on this great asset of this community. Our emphasis going forward is on education and training. You've already heard mentioned that the governor has sitting on his desk, an amendment to the FY '19 money. This isn't next year money, this is today's money. When he signs this contract, that money immediately becomes available to the technical college system of Georgia to bring a $35 million asset to Chattahoochee Tech that will be placed on property owned and adjacent to the Paulding County Airport. And that will give us a training facility that will provide training for new aviation career mechanics that are going to service the aviation community in this state and this nation going forward. We are the location for the Atlanta area offering of the FAA Aviation Career Academy. We've got Mr. Ricky Flores from the FAA here today and he's going to speak after I do and tell you all about that and what it means to us and this community. We have partnered with Paulding County High School STEM Program and we host their Paulding County STEM event at the airport each year. This gives our high school students, hundreds of them, come through this event each year and have an opportunity to have a hands-on experience with employers and careers that are centered on engineering, mathematics, science, technical fields, things that will be high-paying jobs for them. We're excited to participate in that every year. We have a new flight school, Flying Tigers, which offer flight training at all levels. On May 11th, the AOPA is offering a rusty pilot training program to encourage pilots that might not have been active for a while to get back into aviation. We're now the home of Chapter 268 of the Experimental Aircraft Association, which meets every third Saturday at our airport. This is the organization dedicated to keeping the spirit of the Wright Brothers alive. These guys and women actually build airplanes themselves with their hands that they then fly. Sounds crazy, but they do it and they do it safely. And I'm a proud member of that organization and I have in fact built an airplane in my past as well, which makes me crazy. The 18,000-square-foot terminal building now serves as what I'm calling the Paulding County Aviation Conference Center. Why do I call it that? Because we've hosted weddings, anniversaries, birthdays, training events, off-site business events, airport tours, church events, networking events. There have been thousands, we estimate maybe as many as 5,000 Paulding County citizens passed through the doors of that building last year in all of these events that were held. And the vast majority of them who were first-time visitors have the same response, "Wow, I didn't know all this was out here." So in a sense, to have been the centerpiece of the political firestorm for the past six years, it is amazing to me how many people don't know we're out there and don't know what it's all about. So we invite all Paulding County citizens to come get to know the airport. But the intergovernmental agreement that was signed in 2014 between the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners, which assumed the commercialization of the airport would be successful and move forward, is now obsolete. The funding profile of that intergovernmental agreement decreases each year down to zero in the 10th year, which we're about halfway through that agreement now. And the shortfall in that funding was planned to be made up from funding that would have been generated by commercialization. That obviously now is no longer going to happen. And today, the airport is left with insufficient operating funds to survive into the future. The intergovernmental agreement needs to be replaced with a new agreement that reflects where we are today and where we want to be in the future, as well as providing adequate funding for airport operations in compliance with our obligations to the FAA. Today, I ask you to take two actions. Number one, I ask you to pass a motion to authorize the Paulding County Finance Office to release our July 1, 2019 payment early in the amount of $137,500 so that we will have adequate funding to get through the remainder of this of Y. This is not a budget increase, it's simply an early payment of an amount that is owed to the airport under the terms of the intergovernmental agreement. Then I ask you to pass a motion to authorize your county administrator to work with the Airport Authority to develop a draft of a new intergovernmental agreement to be presented to both boards for consideration. The goals of this new intergovernmental agreement should include the re-establishment of the Paulding County Airport Department, returning control of the airport to the county Board of Commissioners where in our opinion it belongs. There was a 1963 science fiction show called The Outer Limits. I have been living in the outer limits for the past three years. You may remember at the end of that show, the controller, the voice of the controller said, "We now return control of your TV set to you." And I would like to be able to stand before you and say, "We now return control of your airport to you." We would like to offer that we would work together to develop a plan that makes sense as we go forward to manage this asset. And I had a picture loaded up here and is there anybody in here who knows how to get it up on the screen? There it is. Okay, good. So this picture is a picture taken off of our patio deck on the night of the Super Bowl. And the reason I want to show this is you can't really tell it, but there's a series of airplanes lined up in a horseshoe shape behind here and that line extended on behind our fuel farm in the area of the ramp there around the terminal building. And we have a dozen airplanes here for the Super Bowl. We were the last airport in that ring of airports that were considered metropolitan Atlanta airports for purposes of Super Bowl planning and bringing the Super Bowl traffic into Atlanta. We had a dozen. That's a lot for us. McCullum and Fulton County had 100. We would have liked to have had that. But let me tell you what this dozen represented. This dozen represented over a $10,000 windfall for the community, for our economic community here in the form of additional fuel sales, rental cars, restaurants, food that was served to the flight crews who were there, all of the business that was transacted as they passed through Paulding County on their way to the Super Bowl and back, some of them that night, some the next day. I also want to point out that those aircraft, I conservatively estimate to have been valued at over $250 million, a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of iron setting on our airfield here in Paulding County at one time. That one aircraft that you're looking at in the picture here as the sun's going down behind it, had that airplane been based at our airport permanently, would have resulted in over half a million dollars in taxes being generated for the county. I've talked a lot in the past about all of the revenue generated at an airport per policy from the FAA must stay at the airport and that's true. This is fuel concession, sales tax, revenue from leases, and so forth. It does not, however, apply to ad valorem tax. Ad valorem tax, like your car tags and your property tax you pay on your house and taxes in Georgia that are paid on aircraft based at airports in Georgia, stays with the county. So this aircraft, if it were based in Paulding County, would put $200,000 or $300,000 into the school budget, into the school tax revenue, into all of the revenue sources that we have. We have an airplane just like this that wants to come to Paulding County. In order to make that happen, we need to complete our corporate hangar so that we have a place that we can store that aircraft when it's fueled. So we need to partner with you to make these things happen so that all of the positive aspects that we can benefit from this airport are realizable to this community. And with that, I'm done and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that y'all may have for me.
That romantic that takes sunset pictures behind the airplane.
It was a lucky shot. It's amazing what an iPhone can do.
Oh, waiting if the commissioners have any questions, I would also like to recognize Yolanda and Randy and acknowledge the outstanding work that they do out there on a daily basis. Represent us well.
I will ask a couple of questions to Terry. First, Terry, would you please email, I got this when I walked in, it's on the counter here. Would you please email me a copy of this?
Happy to.
Second question I have is regarding advanced payment. You get, I know your request for an advanced payment assumes a change in the intergovernmental But if you get an advanced payment, you get July's money now, where are you going to get money in July?
That'll be up to the renegotiation of the intergovernmental agreement. It would be worked out between the Airport Authority and your board. Let me point out that where did the money go? Why are we short that money? I'll point out that the conflict council that we had to hire because we were sued by your board, we had to pay $144,000 to over the past three years. So roughly what we had to pay to conflict council, which was not of our own doing, is about the amount of that payment that we are short to get through the remainder of this year. In addition, the Paulding County Airport Authority has paid for quite a bit in preparation for the school. We've paid for the engineering studies, the surveys, the appraisals, the generation of the paperwork that had to get submitted to Georgia DOT and the FAA trying to get the land released for the school. We've spent over $50,000 today and we're not done yet. And that's not really an airport responsibility, but it is something that we're doing for the aviation community so that we can see this school become a reality and that's our part of the bill that we need to pay to make that happen. And then again, the shortfall is there because we had assumed, or they had assumed, I wasn't there when the agreement was signed in 2014, but the assumption was that commercialization was moving forward and we would have the terminal building rent and the 3% revenue share that were a part of that contract that would eventually make any funding from the county unneeded, unnecessary. And that is now not going to happen. So there's a significant shortfall in the budget over this 10-year time period because of the lack of commercialization. So the situation, Commissioner Davis, has changed. The funding requirements to keep the airport viable have changed. But again, I point out that under the terms of the grant assurances, it's actually your board, not ours, who is financially responsible for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the airport. And we have been as good stewards as we possibly could of the funding that we had available and quite frankly, I think have done remarkably well considering to get us to the point where we are today. But we have this shortfall and that's how we would propose that we address it.
I guess the next question I would ask, could you also email me a fiscal summary for current fiscal year so I can see?
That changes every day. I'll send you our records as of today with our budget and so forth. So happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Tibbetts, delighted to have you here. You answered that update and that perspective and... As Mr. Tibbetts mentioned, we also have another guest who's going to provide some information about ACE, the Aviation Career Education Academy. And a little bit about Ricky Flores, before, when he's coming up here, he retired from the Navy after 20 years. He was a Navy aviation mechanic who retired as Chief Flores. For those of you ladies that had a crush on Tom Cruise like my wife and Chris found it as politics. Maverick flew F-14s and this man is going to speak to us, worked on F-14 Toncats. And then he went to work, he came to Georgia and moved to Paulding County in 1996. He took a job with Hawker Beechcraft, a big aviation firm and maintenance company. He worked there for 11 years at Fulton County Airport and then in 2011, he got a job with the Federal Aviation Administration as a safety inspector. And last year, Ricky, with his vision about aviation summer camp, began talking with myself and Frank and Terry and then some other people in the educational system, Mayors Perry, visited our airport and he told me recently that he decided there's no other place he wanted to have this academy than right here in Paulding County. Ricky, so glad to have you here today and tell us a little bit more about what you're up to this summer.
I appreciate Mr. Chairman, Commissioners for allowing me to have the time to speak on behalf of the FAA. As you mentioned, I've been with the Federal Aviation Administration for 11 years, working in the Atlanta Flight Standards Strategic Office, which is a federal building not on the international side of the airport. So I get the love advantage of having to drive the Atlanta traffic every moment coming from Paulding County. 45 minutes to get in and an hour and 10 minutes to get back. My days start early and one of the programs that the FAA started, I've been in aviation for, what, going on 40 years, close to. Military gave me the experience and also gave me the opportunity to get out of Oklahoma, basically. And when I joined the Navy, aviation was something that just spurred up when I was in high school. Vocational training was an opportunity in high school that I was able to attend in my junior senior year, which I started studying as an auto mechanic, but there was nothing in aviation. I just talked to a friend one morning when he came in and he said, "Join the Navy." And so we started talking and said, "Well, that's not what I'm going to do." As I started looking at programs within the community, a lot of high schools have the STEM program started. I think Paulding County High School has a STEM program already incorporated and there's several high schools throughout the state that have STEM that emphasize what the STEM is all about. What the FAA wants to put emphasis on is technical STEM elements and incorporate it into what the aviation is all about. Because every one of those elements have a factor into aviation as a career, whether it be in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, they all play a key element on putting the plane in the sky or putting an aircraft or any vehicle in space. So the FAA started a long time ago, several years ago, the STEM ABSID, which is the ABSID for portion is aviation space education. This is an emphasis that they want to say, "All right, we need to really promote the aviation community and careers and what it can provide for students." In October of last year, October 11th, 2018, the FAA came out with a memorandum that says the aviation community is facing a critical shortage, workforce shortage estimated as high as 1.2 million for pilots and maintenance technicians. And in future, this shortage will have an impact on the FAA's mission to ensure safe and efficient aerospace system. As again, as probably I'll mention, that one of the safest aviation community is what the United States has. There's nothing that comes close to what we do. The technology, the advancement, engineering, all that is a key aspect of the National Educational Outreach Program. So that memorandum came out saying, which was just last year, it's been around for a long time. The ACE Academy has been little programs for three days, five days, that bring a whole age group of young kids to talk about pilots, mechanics, just look at planes, basically. It's been virtually unknown in the FISV. So when I was approached about it and we started talking about this program, this is something that's more of a volunteer program within the FISV. It's not my primary job. As Mr. Carmack mentioned, I'm an aviation safety inspector. I have my own program in the entire state of Georgia that I go out to... I have my own program in the entire state of Georgia that I go out to do surveillance on operators to make sure that they're doing their job right per federal aviation regulations. This is something that piqued my interest. And what I looked at is that this is something I really love because I love education, I love training, I love aviation. And is there any way I can do that? I was going to see what I can participate in promoting it. So, one of the things that I started looking at is that I had to go through certain training and I had to get approval. And then what the FAA does is allow, a sponsorship allows my time to be spent on this program. There's no funding for it. There's nothing that we can generate funds to, for resources, materials, operators, or anything to carry on these events. We are relying totally on community involvement, on operators dedicating their time and resources to make this program successful. The ACE Academy is just a stepping stone. It's a little camp to get kids to start thinking about it. So what I wanted to do is generate, what can we do to improve it, to really keep it going? So, I've been living here in Pauling County since 1996. I have never been living anywhere else since the Navy brought me here. I finished my tour of duty at Dennis Atlanta and I retired and my wife and family decided we liked George Everstine. So Pauling County was something that means dear to me to the success of the community. And I've done a lot of things, involvement, that airports are something that I've visited quite often in the past. And I said, "Man, this is such a beautiful airport, it gets underutilized." You know, I would go on continually to airports to do ramp checks and every time I went to Pauling County, there was nothing there. And, you know, so the things have changed and then they started doing air shows. And the first air show they had in 2015 was a great event and it really showcased that airport. I think they had one after that and I don't believe they had one since. So, that's one of my primary jobs is to monitor air shows. So I've taken kids to air shows to see what, show them behind the scenes what the FAA does. So, I immediately thought of Pauling County Airport. And so I gave Terry a call and I let the voice mail and said, "Terry, this is basically the FAA. Will you give me a call back at your convenience so I can talk to you about something?" Anytime anybody hears from the FAA, y'all, I think they're in trouble about something because Terry is an A&amp;P mechanic with an IA, Inspector Organization, so, you know, any pilots, anyone, they always say, "What did I do wrong?" "No, no, no, hold on. This is something that I think would be in your best interest." So we sat there and talked on the phone for about 30 minutes and I explained to the program what we want to do. And I think what Pauling County Airport is a resource that I think could be utilized and Terry was 100% into it. I set up a meeting with Pauling, when I came in the meeting, I thought it was just going to be me and him. No, Terry had brought a bunch of people. Mr. Carmichael, Mr. Frank Baker was there, Pauling County School District, Mayores Perry was representing. Yolanda was representing the staff support. And then we also had a student there on a work program that was going to take the minutes for us. He had room full. And so that, when I immediately saw that, I knew I picked the right spot. I knew that this was something that Pauling County would be fully supported and fully behind it. So we started having meetings and we've been having meetings since November of last year and every month we've been having meetings with the intention of setting up an ACE Academy. As I pass up the flyers for the ACE Academy promoting, this is a collaboration between the FAA and Pauling County School District. It's a career path. It promotes aviation in multiple facets of the aviation community. It's not just about aircraft mechanics, it's not just about pilots. One of the things I wanted to teach kids and Terry raised me that Pauling County has an opportunity to be aviation educational center. So what do we do about that? Well, you teach where aviation came from, you teach where it's now and you teach where it's going and you show the community everything about aviation. So I have aviation military history coming in, I have a Navy recruiter coming in, Delta is going to come in, commercials, any aspect of aviation that I can think of as fully supported this program already come in to do the presentation to keep the students' interest. One of the things we look, we really need now is to get the kids to start thinking about it. So we're really going on this first academy for the high school students, the ones who are starting to think about what are they going to do when they get out of high school in the next couple of years. Pauling County, Mayores Perry and Monica Rizza, I'm not sure I pronounced your name right, are working to get students involved in that. And then we started working about, all right, who's going to do what? Jerry worked with me to get the Pauling County Airport approval, the airport authority approval and the facilities. With Terry's background and our experience together, this is going to go into a direction where no one really could expect. As I started making calls and started calling operators, they're all into it. What can we do? Where can we do it and by all means? The Army Heritage Foundation is coming in to fly their Cobra in. The Commander of Air Force is going to fly one of the World War II planes in to do presentations. Commercial operators, that's Delta, FedEx, are going to do presentations. And if you all know aviation as much as I'm learning about the state, Mr. Pat Epps from Epps Aviation himself is going to come in and do a presentation. The Epps family has been a key family in this state of Georgia for promotion of aviation. When I met him and I talked to him about, and I started looking at pictures on his walls and I said, "Tell us about some of the Wright Brothers planes." He goes, "No, my dad developed those planes." I said, "Really? I want those pictures. I want these pictures. Anything we can do to show what aviation means and where it's going." So, all that in retrospect that we started looking at, set this thing up and having key speakers. And one of the things we look at is that a lot of students want to go to the military and I'm fully supportive of that, but go aviation. You know, I want to see, I want to tell you what you can do aviation because I'm going to stand an example what aviation in the military did for me. Provided me to raise my family, provided me a career out of the military. And so, if they want to go do that, by all means do it. So the Navy recruiter come in, that's coming in, I said, "You can talk everything about aviation and that's it." We got all sorts of ratings and you can't fool me because I know all the aviation ratings in the Navy. And then as we started looking at, we get the Air Force, the Army, you know, to come in to do presentations because every branch in the military has an aviation program. So, that experience and that training leads to what we can do at Pauling County and the formation of this school, the governor deal that started and now is being approved and being routed through to get the funding, is something that will greatly impact the community within Pauling County because it keeps students here. It keeps them training and everything else. And then if, once they finish their A&amp;P training and they get their certification, we're talking about jobs that they can go anywhere. You know, Atlanta is a huge resource for jobs in aviation careers. It's not just mechanics or pilots, we're talking about air traffic controllers, administrative. There's so many different aspects that someone who pursue an aviation career, it's my intention to steer in the right direction. So what the ACE Academy is a stepping stone. Most academies throughout the nation are promoted, they do a one-week course and that's pretty much it. My intention is not only doing that one-week course, but doing follow-ups, mentoring, get some of the students who really want to pursue it and set them on a path, a direction that they know they can follow through on and having someone to talk to. Being a representative of the FAA gives me a lot of access to resources where I can also take students into repair station facilities and do the job shadowing program, which is part of the ABSID program too. Where they can spend a day with technicians, not only in the general aviation, but on the commercial side, like the Deltas, Delta or Southwest or anyone who's doing major repairs. And they can see what they really, that this is a career they want to go. We're planning on 60 students roughly to attend this first academy. 50 of them are basically going to come from Pauling County High Schools and I'd say, "Well, I need at least 10 reserved for the FAA for outside of county." We got to be fair with everybody. And so there's, the interest with Pauling County School District working with us and the sponsorships that we're hopefully generating within the business communities is something that I want to make it memorable. And it's not something that's just going to stop on Friday. It will continue on throughout the year. We have air shows throughout the year that I will pick up students and take them to behind the scenes. On Friday, basically, it's all demonstration days and everything else is looked at and coordinated and there's no crowds. So we get, FAA has access to show the students, get hands-on, to look, to really get close and personal with the pilots and to talk to them. And there's so many different companies and organizations that comes in to fly and perform. My last one was in Moone, Georgia, where I took some students out and we got to watch the Blue Angels. And they don't come around too often. And so, the thing that we want to do is set up a mentorship, set up sometimes so we can bring in to mock interviews with these seniors in high schools and to get them on a path where they're just not lost. And then what we'll also look at is starting to do maybe one or two-day, three-day programs for the younger students, you know, to get them to start thinking about it. This program is about kindergarten older to the 12th grade. And even some of the students who might be even older that have completed high school, you know, I have no problem with them attending. What we want to do is when they leave, they have resources in a packet and a vellum with them to take them and keep them to think about this program. We want to instill pride within themselves, you know, with the type of dress code that they may think about, how do you present yourself? Teaching them that because the presenters that come in in front of you are potential employers. They can be hiring you. So how do you present yourself and you learn it at an early stage is key. So, when we look at setting this academy up, it's Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:00 with different, you know, presenters coming in with either an hour to two-hour presentations. We're going to feed them and then, you know, we're looking at having T-shirts made up that they can wear and advertise Pauling County. When they see that, they forget that, you know, that's something we want to do. And so, to me, not only representing the FAA and keeping my program going, I'm also representing Pauling County. This is some of the things that we looked at and it's a stepping stone. I may be steering the right directions because they're always saying, "Can you do this? Can you do this?" Yeah, but Pauling County's coming first. I want to do the ACE Academy and there's no doubt in my mind that we can make this ACE Academy the premier ACE Academy in the state of Georgia. No doubt in my mind. We're all working together, Pauling County School District, Airport Authority, the Board of Commissioners and all the local communities. That just is an area, an avenue to promote that airport. It's just such a nice facility. Those airplanes that Terry showed about the Super Bowl, I actually, I thought I was going to get assigned that because their FAA inspectors were assigned to certain airports, so I got assigned to Pauling County Airport. And I seen a lot of them come in and parked and they were full. They were turning people away. They didn't know about Pauling County. You know, they had 12 slots, but I'm sure they could have got more if people were aware of that. So, the advance with Atlanta and the growth of Atlanta, with all the professional sports teams and all the events that's going on, these spots, the airports are going to be very limited. With the school coming on board, it's just another avenue that we can train technicians, we can keep them focused on what they want to do. They don't have to go far away from their home area that they live in and hopefully during high schools, if we can get the program to start looking, they can start thinking about it while still in high school. Chattahoochee Technical School is going to be involved with it. One of the A&amp;P schools at Easton, Georgia's coming up to do a presentation. They have a huge program for pilots, technicians, air traffic controllers. It's just some of the things that we want to steer everybody in the right direction. With that being said, with the flyers, the FAA sponsorship is something that I'm giving this voluntary. It wasn't assigned to me, it wasn't made, basically, but the FAA came out and said, "Look, we need to do everything we can." It's just something that has kind of taken off on me, you know, spending a lot of time dealing and setting everything up, but I love it. It's something that I have a passion for and if you don't have a passion for doing anything, just don't do it. With Terry's ideas and his vision of Pauling County Airport and what we could do to collaborate and make that airport grow, I think is endless. And any questions? Sorry, I take too much of your time. Sorry, I need to stop talking at so much time.
Your passion is very clear. And thank you for your clarification to us and we look forward to this summer, all the kids that will be affected. Anybody have any questions? Appreciate your interest in Pauling County and interest in our airport to push that forward. I think we can become the aviation epicenter for education around the state.
My last thing I would say is that a lot of you in this room, my head, seniors or my head students, or even something they might be thinking about or sitting around in the house, but even I've had a few in my house that decide what they wanted to do. If they're unsure, they hold me, I don't know, we'd be more happy to steer in the right direction and there's an opportunity for them to attend that camp and it's open to anybody.
More of the flyers, are they on the back?
I, that's one of the limitations that I have, I don't get a call printer at work.
We'll take care of that. Thank you, Ricky. Under award number one is the award of purchase of 23 Dicks Tahari Chevrolet in the amount of $680,350. This Pollard's going to tell us about a lot of things today.
We got a few vehicles here today, but all of these were budgeted out originally. So, in this first award, we have 10 of the Explorer interceptors for the Sheriff's Office. Those are scheduled to be delivered in October. We also have five Admin Explorers for the Sheriff's Office, three Fusions for the Sheriff's Office for Admin. Those are all spliced purchases. We have an F-150 and another Explorer for the jail. Those are, the Explorers are usually for, they're for Admin. They're funded through the JCSA, which is a fine tacked on to the criminal fine paid by the inmates or those that have gone through the court system to be utilized back into the jail program. Recreation has one Explorer and Recreation has one F-150. This was so large, we just put it on in the ten item for the commission's approval. Tahari Chevrolet does not hold the state contracting, but they have voted this week. It was just the state contract, which is usual for them to do that every year.
Number two is the award the...
I answered a question. You mentioned there are two of the 23 for Recreation.
Two of the 23 are Recreation.
Twenty-one of the 23 for the Sheriff's Office.
That's correct.
And all of them are spliced purchases?
No. The 10 interceptors are spliced. The first 18 are spliced for the Sheriff's Office. And then we have three that are JCSA, so they're funded with jail fines.
Right.
And then Recreation are general fund.
And those general fund are budgeted?
Those general fund are budgeted.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Number 10 is the award of purchase of one flatbed truck, Peach State Truck Centers in the amount of $89,685.
This is a DOT purchase and we are recommending more based on the state contract proxy from Peach State Truck Centers.
Any questions on that one? Number three is for the purchase of a T-77, T-4 Bobcat, E-55 compact track loader to the lowest bidder Bobcat of Atlanta in the amount of $77,339.
Our fleet manager, we did go out to visit this one, he received four quotes back for this. equipment and recommends award to the lowest bidder.
Questions? Number four is toward the purchase of two Chevrolet Totos to Harley Chevrolet in the amount of $73,068.
Harley Chevrolet does hold the state contract for Totos, and one of these Totos is to be used for K-9 unit and the other ones for transport. One's funded with SPOSS and the other one's funded with JCSA.
Questions? Number five is toward the purchase of two 10W dump trucks in the amount of $263,472.
Again, this one's a DOT purchase, and this is being purchased off the state contract program. Peach State Centers.
Any questions? Are there any representatives from Harley in the audience? Just going to thank them for their assistance in improving our fleet. Thank you, gentlemen. We have Sheriff Gullidge to come back up and give us an update on what's going on in the SO.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank y'all for letting me do this. I want to give you all the year-end numbers. I put a nickel down between the sign and I should argue, we have firemen, so we have some pictures too for him to illustrate what was going on, and he's not even here to be picked up today. So, I want to make it real brief. I know y'all been busy, heard a lot this morning, so I want to just give you the numbers for 2018 for the Sheriff's Office. We patrol 2,966,711 miles, total arrested individuals 3,484, we've issued 3,012 traffic citations, we have 63,885 complaints. The high-volume calls for the year was 55,62 alarms, 2,748 domestic disputes, 1,769 lockouts. 4,384 were paid us in civil papers that our guys served. 5,240 of these calls were suspicious incidents, either persons or vehicles. 2,645 fell, but taken to burglaries and internados. Just so I put it in my pad, there's still a rash of internados going on. If you have belongings in your vehicle, police will loop them out and unlock your doors to help us a lot. If you're going through neighborhood, just hit the door lock, so the door opens, they go through the car, and it's locked most of the time. As soon as I say this, I'm going to get the windows broken. Most of the time, they'll go on to the next car where they don't think you can always let them. Remove your valuables or security vehicle. There's a thing on the side of most houses, if a big door opens, you can actually pull in it, unless you're like my wife, you pack it full of $3 worth of junk and you can get a $55 car inside. You know, good times, man, I should probably just park your car inside. Our guys performed 7,745 traffic stops, arrested 83 DUIs, we cleared up 4,186 warrants, we did 4,094 cell controls, we had 1,598 juvenile offenses reported, 447 of those was assigned, 577 charges. The detention center, of course, stays extremely busy. In 2018, we caught 3,913 inmates with a daily average population of about 236. Our transport unit, which September was talking about buying Totos, we transported prisoners and victims all over the state. They did 7,633 transport escort, prison pickups, 44 of these was mental health, which is people 10-13, we have to carry state laws, we have to carry on for mental health. The inmate workforce is another thing that's near and dear to my heart, is the people make this county look like it's a trash dump, and it's not, it's my home, and I love it. Quit pulling trash out your windows. Area of detail, and we don't have enough that we can stay on it all the time, but we picked up 487 bags of garbage and picked up 115 mile, 12 miles of railways in Paulding County. I actually like talking with you.
I'd like to ask you about cellphone use. How many stops are, is that a problem?
I would have to talk to the guys. I stay in with different centers, I don't really hear a lot of that.
About the workforce, are we, I know Sergeant Hinson provides information about new, are we losing personnel?
Always. Got two more letters, there's many people leaving, so we're making a better word than we just put up. Again, in our profession, and it's hard to get people interested in this, where I work even more, and not to poke anybody in the eye, but if our retirement benefits are not what they should be, we can't keep them entertained or hire good people. We're basically hiring young men and women to train them, watch them go to other agencies and face more of their retirement benefits. It's something we got to work on. And it's going to require all y'all to have to do that. I don't have that. Got to have y'all to do it, so.
Budget time is here.
Yes, sir. I know.
Any other questions?
What about the sex traffic? Rotary clothing is a big thing moving into...
I think it's becoming a big thing in the whole country. We've got two people that they're closely monitoring, and I know I wouldn't say anything before, but just like the planes at the airport, we actually had guys out there watching what was going on, with people coming and going on these planes, because that's a great way to do it without, without being seen. So, we actually had people at our airport keeping out things like this. It's like a drug problem in the country. It's not going to go away, but it breaks my heart even thinking about it, but I mean, it's here, it's everywhere.
Anyone else? Sheriff Gullidge, we appreciate you. Thanks for all due.
Thank y'all for your time, sir. Have a good day.
Under Public and Public Special Agenda Items, we have number one to sign it up under the consent agenda. We have four items, the unit to bear with me, this is required. Number one is to appoint Bobby Brudzzi to the Senate Committee for Commission for Term Ending February 26, 2020. Number two is to appoint Mr. Sandy Caker to the Paulding County Board of Health. Number three is to declare items listed as surplus and approved their disposal through auction or trade. The Sheriff's Department is, has car unit 52, a 1998 Ford 2FA... Let me get that one ahead and read on this. Okay, I'll hurry. 1998 Ford, serial number 2FA, FD71W1WX125722, Crown Vic, that's the Crown Vic, okay? And also, Sheriff, is car unit S-177, 1998 Ford 2FA, FP71W2WX134669, Crown Vic, and so the Sheriff's car unit S-102, a 2005 Ford 2FA, FP71W65X1467578, Crown Vic. And last, the Sheriff's is car unit P-7, 2008 Ford Crown Vic, which is 2FA, FP71B48X17003. With the tax commissioner is a truck unit 368, a 1999 Ford Ranger, 1FTYR10C8XP74955, and tax assessor car unit 364, which is the 2004 Focus, 1FA, FP36P7YW204806. And number four item, the consent agenda is amend the 2019 Planning Commission schedule by adding and needing on March the 8th, 2019. Do you think commissioners would like to place any of these items in regular business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place number two in regular business.
Okay. And Mr. Caker will place number two in regular business. Old business, we have none new business. Number one is discuss action authorized the chairman to enter into a supplemental contract with Trans Systems Incorporated in the amount of $109,639.52 for engineering, design, and service for the Swan Drive Dr. project. Mr. Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I start off, I'd like to announce that we do have a round of litter pickup on county highways starting next week, so 521 miles. I know there was a couple comments earlier today about litter on highways, so we're loving contracting, our contractors are working on that. I think I provided you the lengthiest backup memo I've ever written on the particular agenda items, so I will keep it short, like the sheriff, hopefully shorter. Again, this is for engineering of aluminum arch culverts for two locations on Swan Drive located in post 3. We have previously performed engineering studies for pre-staining bridges at these locations. However, when we bid these projects out for construction, the construction cost was over $2 million, which was 61% higher than our internal estimates. So, at that point, we stepped back and tried to figure out ways to make these projects more financially viable. We looked at reducing the costs by changing from bridges to aluminum arch culverts and also building the culverts on the existing alignment. At this time, I asked the consultant to come up with a construction cost estimate, and they're looking at around $800,000, $850,000. So, if all this goes through, we will save over $1 million on construction costs. The design time for this work is five months, and I can hopefully answer any questions that you may have on this.
No questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. New business number two is discuss action about a board of commissioners to initiate an application to amend the official zoning that rezoned approximately 66 acres from V2 Highway Business District and PRD Plan Residential District to V2 Highway Business District for commercial, retail, service, office lid usings. Ms. Lippman?
Thank you, and good morning commissioners. There's several of you are new, but if you may recall, last August, the Board of Commissioners voted to prohibit acceptance of any rezoning applications to the PRD Plan Residential Development zoning district. In that ordinance, we included provisions that any conforming property would be considered vested, and the two categories we considered for vesting was that they have a minimum of 50 continuous acres and be under single ownership and a unified control until development. Planning and zoning staff since August have been looking over all the property zone PRD, and we have identified several that we would like to initiate rezonings. The zoning ordinance allows either the planning commissioner, the board of commissioners, in addition to property owners, to initiate rezonings. And the first piece of property we have identified is this case. It was case 2007-17Z as well as case 2008-6-7. The initial case rezoned 77.949 acres to PRD and V2. The subsequent rezoning left a remainder of 35.54 acres on PRD, which does not meet the 50-acre minimum requirement. We have contacted the property owners, they are agreeable to this rezoning, and this property is the potential future Costco site, and this rezoning would put the entire tract in commercial zoning and would allow staff to revisit the zoning stipulations that were placed at both times of the rezoning. So, this would be the reason for the called meeting in March, which we have identified that we have the form of our planning commutators, and we would just ask that the board of commissioners initiate this rezoning.
How many property owners are involved there?
At the current time, one.
So, your staff's work on this, and you make that change, very important transaction moving forward to?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Lippman. New business item number three is what we just added from the consent agenda, which is to appoint Mr. Sandy Caker to the Paulding County Board of Health. Were described that case and why we need to do that?
Yes, sir. I believe that Commissioner Caker, she's the proposed appointee, and when you put something on a consent agenda, you, it's there because you pretty much know in advance that all commissioners agree to the proposed action. In Commissioner Caker's situation, I believe she's presumably going to abstain from the vote in favor of her, so this will give her the opportunity to do that.
You can't vote for yourself?
She could vote against yourself.
All right, late announcement. Those of you that have been around Paulding County for a while, I see some of the audience, Flight 242 continues to have fundraisers in progress, and a week from Saturday on the 9th of March is going to be dinner, very fancy and nice dinner at the airport. If you or a friend or spouse want to attend, I can certainly get that set up for you. That accident killed more people than any other accident in the history of Georgia. So, a monument for that, the location of that monument is already owned by the county, but there, there's a whole committee, I'm not on it, but there's a whole committee that are putting on this dinner for March the 9th. Next and last announcement is that our operations manager is one year older today, and I think it's 39 for the 10th year. Happy birthday, Scott. That's the conclusion of our regular business, so we have no D for executive session today. So, I guess I'll go back there. You'll bring lunch? Entertained emotionally, good turd. Thank you all for being here.
I'll make them emotionally, sir.
Emotionally, by Christopher Davis, your second. Second, this is over in the yard, all discussion. All those in favor say aye.